Please rise from the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sister Carol, do you have an option for?
Uh, yeah, just a quick one. It started out like any other day, but ended up in a disaster. I'm talking about the anniversary of September 11th. Can we have a moment of silence for those people that passed on that day? Thank you.
Okay. Roll call, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Brenneman?
Here.
Mr. DiMatteo?
Here.
Mrs. Fatika?
Here.
Dr. Faust?
Here.
Mr. Leon?
Here.
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Chairman Horton?
Here. This portion of the meeting will now have the hearing of the public. If you made arrangements prior to coming tonight, we'll allot you five minutes. Anyone else from the public that desires to come up to the podium and be heard today, we'll allot you three. And, uh... Well, anyone, any hearing from the public? Anyone here from the public?
Yeah.
How many minutes?
Three.
All right, just checking. Hi, my name is Dolan Minnick, and I've been here before, and I... I want to catch my breath first. And I'm an elected official, just like you. My membership votes for me, and I know your constituents vote for you. You all know that on behalf of all aboard Erie, I've been asking you to negotiate. This resolution is a form of negotiation. It's not an ordinance, it's a resolution, which means there are some details that can still be worked out. First, if you read it, you may think it's not perfect. I agree. But it has some significant compromises. It divides the board four-four. Four for the city, four for the county, and the ninth member being appointed alternately by the county executive and mayor. This seems like a reasonable compromise to me, and it also assumes that whoever appoints it, they are an independent thinker. So if the mayor appoints it, you're not going with the county, with the party line. Now, I think it's not perfect, and one item that I would have liked to see was that the board members be bus riders. Whether it's a choice rider, like me, I own a car, but I choose to ride, or it's a person who doesn't have any other form of public transportation. I'm hoping that when the county or the mayor appoint somebody and the other officials approve that appointment, that they will take into consideration that. Having a bus rider on the board is very important. Now, I've contacted a lot of you, a lot of members of both councils, and one of the complaints I heard is that perhaps the 20-year term is too long. This, if you feel this way, this can also be worked out, but this is a huge improvement from the last charter. Voting no jeopardizes the confidence of the public, not only in public transportation, but also the governmental process itself. Voting no continues this disagreement and lack of communication and possible lack of trust that has been a problem for over a year. It ruins the public trust. It also gives the mayor exactly what he wants: a failed resolution.
Ms. Smith, Ms. Minnick, your three minutes have elapsed, and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, almost evening, I guess. I want to thank you for your efforts intent to further emerge to 2040, creating a more regional EMTA. Please vote yes on the EMTA charter compromise. I would like to share a personal experience that would be helpful for expressing my point of view. I'm Margaret Watts. I live in Washington Township, Edinburgh, Pennsylvania. A few summers ago, I got to know a young African-American psychology major while enrolled in a statistics class at Edinburgh University of Pennsylvania. Vanessa always arrived long before class began and was often asleep at her desk. Following class, we would work on assignments in the onsite computer lab. This was when I got to learn of her life circumstances and the difficult challenges she faced. She was a member of a fragmented family, some living in Pittsburgh and some in Erie. Vanessa was living with an aunt on the east side of Erie and commuted daily to the Edinburgh campus using the EMTA. She was bound by the EMTA schedule for scheduling her classes and maintaining a job back in Erie. This tight scheduling structure left little flexibility in her life when class assignments required additional computer time or her job demanded longer hours. I experienced the anxiety of research data not working through the software program adequately and witnessed other students' disappointment, requiring numerous attempts to complete the assignment by deadline. Some students loved to go to other classes, but Vanessa would have to leave to catch the last bus to get back to Erie without finishing the assignment. In frustration, she asked me if I could take her to Erie so she could complete our assignment. I had the means and the desire to help her on a couple of these occasions. Her dependency on the EMTA was directly tied to her success or non-success at completing her degree. If Vanessa felt empowered and thought she could make an impact for improving life for herself and others, wouldn't she be a valuable asset for the EMTA? Would Vanessa's circumstances, as well as many others', be entered into a database for future decisions? Why couldn't Vanessa or others like her become a voting voice for representing the ridership of EMTA? Vanessa's experience as a daily commuter between the city and the county, as well as within the city, would be a valuable asset for representing EMTA's ridership. Why not share the power with those whose lives are directly affected by the EMTA? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andy Vi. I live up by the zoo in Erie. I wonder, I don't know, because nobody seems to be able to pin down facts, but I wonder if, if the EMT board, some of the board members have been serving terms that have expired and they're still there. I wonder if their decisions in EMTA board meetings are invalid all the way back to before Dennis Solinsky left. Thanks.
Thank you.
Do you need my name and address?
Yes, just for the record.
Cindy Purvis, 101 West 34th Street in Erie. Members of County Council, thank you for your willing, willingness to serve at such an important time in history. The distress of the city of Erie is not contained to her borders. It affects all who live in Erie County. We and thousands of our fellow citizens are gassed with the dispute over the EMTA charter. We suspect that there must be layers of some type of corruption that we will never see. It just looks on the surface like silliness or small-minded thought. For the sake of the citizens of Erie County, I ask you to pass the compromise that is on the table. Then let the voters of the city take it up with the members of City Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Jessica Molsan, 1545 Fairmont Parkway, Erie. First, I would like to thank the members of City Council who were willing to meet with members of City Council to create the proposed EMTA charter agreement you will vote on this evening. There are less than two weeks before the current charter agreement expires, and I realize that even if the majority of County Council votes in favor of the proposed amended charter agreement this evening, that the majority of City Council must do the same at their county, at the City Council meeting tomorrow morning. Regardless, I ask you to vote in favor of the proposed agreement to move public transportation forward in Erie County and to end the fear that those who rely on public transportation are experiencing as the expiration of the current transportation charter approaches. Access to public transportation is vital to the survival of citizens you've been elected to serve in Erie County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca Providenti, 3005 Hastings Road. I would just like to show a hand from council members who pleasantly take the bus every day to work, to school, to your doctor's appointments, take your kids to daycare. Do not toy with these people's lives. Have a sense of what you're doing. Pass, get over the impasse, and let's move forward. And you are, it is abundantly clear that you are so separated from the ridership that you have done nothing so far for the last 12 months. So you need to get back together and remember that the ridership is the people who benefits from the transportation. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Brian McGrath. I'm here representing the Mill Creek Township Board of Supervisors at the request of Councilwoman Fatika. I'm here to offer a little historical perspective, which I guess means I'm the old guy, and she wanted to know what type of involvement, Mrs. Fatika wanted to know what type of involvement the Board of Supervisors has had with EMTA over the years. I presented you with my comments tonight. Over the past 31 years, Mill Creek Township has contributed nearly $860,000 towards the operations of EMTA. Funding reached its highest level, $47,300 in 1996, and remained there through 1998. Due to budgetary constraints in Mill Creek, funding was suspended in 1999 and 2000. An appeal in late 2000 by the EMTA director that included a statistical analysis of Mill Creek residents' use helped resume their funding. The statistics at that time showed the majority of Mill Creek riders were utilizing the Lyft program. Since 2001, the Board of Supervisors has specified their funding to be directed to the Lyft program. Just a couple of quick comments. I'm not here to offer any opinions other than, I'm not, particularly since I'm not a fan of elected officials commenting on other decisions pending or made by other elected officials, but I will say that I've always been a vocal proponent of proper representation on boards and authorities, whether it be the Airport Authority or Erie Water Works, and I hope that the EMTA issue will result in proper representation.
Thank you.
Hello, Council. My name is Daniel Dubay. I'm from 9 Eagle Street in northeast Pennsylvania. Months back, we had a meeting down at the library. We talked about regional public transit. It was a great meeting. And I was there. I talked about, you know, I've rode subways and trains and buses all over the country. I've been very privileged in that way, and to this day, I'm very privileged. I drove here tonight. I have that privilege. I've been able to drive where I want to go. I, my interest in public transit here locally came out of meetings I've had with community members. And across the board, you know, we talked about jobs, we talked about education, we talked about a number of different things. But public transit was one that seemed like an easy fix. It seemed like, you know, if people could just get to the jobs, they would go to the jobs. There are jobs on Upper Peach, and if you live in downtown Erie, you can't get those jobs because Applebee's is open until 11:00 and the last bus is at 9:30 or something, right? But we can't even get to that place. We couldn't really move on that. We couldn't kind of organize ourselves around that because of this charter impasse. And while to me, you know, the idea of public transit is really important infrastructure to sort of attract millennials and for me to ride it in from northeast is all really cool, you know, in the meantime, there's people that can't get to work if this all goes into jeopardy. There's a lot of things about this compromise that I don't personally like. I think that because of all the jeopardy that's there, I urge you to support this compromise. So I'd like to see greater organization of the ridership. The thing I stated in January or whenever the meeting was remains true, which is that the quality of public transit has less to do with the leadership and more to do with the ridership and how organized it is. And if out of this, we have a better, more organized ridership, I think we'll end up with better public transit. So I thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, council members. John Renwick, Erie, PA, 1023 West 30th Street. President of ATU Local 568 with EMTA. I've got a few concerns with this. I do support the appointees. I have an issue with the terms, the time limits. I also have an issue with the, the funding that the county is taking responsibility for and the city. If you want equal partnership, it should be equal burden. Also, uh... The board appointments. Is the board appointments going to be eliminated immediately and reappointed? Also, there is no union involvement with these councils, with these committees. Been around a lot of authorities, a lot of transit authorities, where there's at least a member from labor on the committees. You're not gonna, and the reason why I say that, we may not necessarily have a vote, but we have the other side of the story. You're going to hear it from the company one way, which he'll tell his board, but there's also the labor side. So, uh, think about that. I do agree with the appointments, but the funding also should be equal because we are going to be double taxed again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens from the public desiring to be heard? Any other citizens from the public desiring to be heard? Anybody from the county executives desire to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. On behalf of the county executive, as we have heard from our citizens today, there's nothing perfect, but yet it's a start. And when we talk about a start, we've, we've had the opportunity of working on it for over a year and a half, and unfortunately, we haven't gotten to where we would like to be, or else we wouldn't be right here today. But I would say that consider, really consider taking the heart of the men and women that have spoken before you on this evening because it's their livelihood. They're going to need a place, a way to get to work. They're going to need a way to get to doctor's appointments. They're going to need a way to get around the county, and in some cases, this is the only way. So we would ask that while it is not a perfect resolution, it is a start. And it is a very, very important start because next Wednesday, if we do not have a charter passed, then the state is proposing to come in and take it over. And the truth of the matter, no one knows what that looks like, no one in this room, because we have not seen anything in writing what that would entail. So again, we ask from the administration that you consider the regional transportation department with the city on this particular Resolution 41 because it is so important to our great citizens. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Uh, we, we haven't had any meetings, so they're assuming there's no finance or personnel committee reports to be heard. Or permanent. There's no old business. We'll move right to the issue at hand and under new miss, under new business. Mr. Smith, would you please read the Resolution Number 41 entitled?
Resolution Number 41, 2016, partnering with the city of Erie for a regional transportation system.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Councilman DiMatteo, seconded by Councilwoman Fatika. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Faust?
Probably not surprising to most, I stand opposed to this resolution for many reasons. Despite the commentary surrounding this issue over the last few days, this resolution achieves none of the goals, and I repeat, none of the goals we set out to achieve at the beginning of this charter dispute. County Council's goals anyway were twofold at the beginning. Number one was to regionalize the authorities so that all areas of the county were equitably represented on the EMTA board, so the riders' needs especially could be met and be represented by people that lived in that area. If this resolution is adopted by all parties, not only is there a potential, but there is a great likelihood that seven of the nine appointees will be city residents, hardly regional in scope. If this resolution is adopted by all parties, it assumes at the point of view of four county council districts, equivalent to roughly 160,000 residents. Nearly two-thirds of the county's population can appropriately be represented by two people, while the city of Erie, with a population of just 100,000, deserves four appointees from City Hall and a probable two more from the representatives here on County Council. When it comes to representation on the board, many have incorrectly used the word "control" as a primary factor for change. While that's an easy enough word for people to understand, it totally misses the point and doesn't represent the views of myself or the views of this council, even though there is current disagreement on County Council as to what course of, course of action we should take. The change of composition on the EMTA board is about achieving a regional presence for the first time regarding transit services, again, so that the people that live in Mrs. Law's district have somebody that represents those people's interests, and Mr. DiMatteo's district, and my district, and Fatika's district, and on and on and on. But not just a, in terms of geography, will, will he have regional representation, but more importantly, in terms of regional points of view, as I've already described. The aggregate point of view of Mrs. Law's district as it pertains to transit services is drastically different than that of Mr. Horton's, and his is drastically different than mine, and so on and so forth, as you work through all of our particular districts. And it shouldn't be expected to be the same. They live drastically different lives and have drastic, drastically different reliances in public transportation, and they need somebody that shares that point of view to properly represent them on any authority. But if that, if that aggregate point of view can work on County Council as it pertains to issues of the library, the courts, human services, the prison, the health department, Pleasant Ridge, 911 services, and on and on and on, and surely it's a model that can be properly and appropriately represent the aggregate transit needs of Erie County on the EMTA board. That's what we've been fighting for, not control for the sake of power, as too many people want to make it be, but for the regional vision through regional representation. The resolution in front of us, at least in my point of view, doesn't get us there. The second goal of County Council at the start of this charter dispute was to relieve the city of its financial burden regarding EMTA so that the city residents would no longer be double taxed for the same service. A second part of that goal would allow the city to use their local match funds on other more pressing matters within the city's limits, like violence or blame. This resident, resolution not only continues those realities for the city, but increases them over time because we know the local match is going to increase over time, and a shortfall can only be made up in so many ways according to this resolution. All of our goals stated within our original proposal that at one time were adopted unanimously by County Council have not been achieved, and in fact, have been flatly rejected by many on City Council and the mayor. I wish it were otherwise, but so be it. My job as a county councilman and our job collectively as members of County Council is not to save the city from its elected leadership. Our job isn't to make the city an offer it can't refuse, or to go or to fashion agreements at all costs, especially if that agreement betrays what we have said we believe. Our job ought to be about finding solutions that are in the best interest of all Erie County residents, bus riders or not, but certainly in the interest of the riders that are both reasonable and right. In that regard, County Councils has stepped up to the plate often, and the living proof is the financial condition of county government and our pension plans. You compare our fiscal health to most any other government, and I'll take our chances with what we've done and the decisions we've made. Although some have tried to make it so, this dispute isn't about who cares more about the riders than somebody else either. I care deeply about those who ride the bus, even though I'm going to vote against this resolution. The Riders Council, for anybody's information, was my, my idea, and was incorporated into all of our different documents. But if our community cannot remain economically viable into the future, who rides the bus from here to there will be low on our list of concerns. And asking and demanding that the city contribute to significantly contribute to EMTA only puts our community's fiscal health in peril. That is why County Council voted in July again unanimously to formally withdraw from EMTA because it was becoming obvious that no agreement could be reached and this issue would end up in court. We didn't want to waste our time, especially on legal proceedings. Instead, the county executive decided to veto the withdrawal, and County Council sustained her veto over the objections of four of us. Yet here we are, a week before the charter expires, we still have no agreement and no process in place to ensure a seamless transition of services if no agreement can be reached, although Penda has assured us that, you know, services will continue. But worst of all, a lawsuit has been filed that will undoubtedly waste precious time, attention, and financial resources. During the veto discussions, to me anyway, it was obvious a primary motivation by members of County Council to sustain the veto was the city's threat to directly charge municipalities in their districts for EMTA services and how unfair that would be. Mill Creek couldn't and shouldn't have to pay more than they were at that time, at this time, the argument was. As you can see by the figures that Mr. McGrath gave us today, those figures have been significant over the years. And Waterford shouldn't have to pay, and Fairview shouldn't have to pay, and other municipalities within the outlying districts shouldn't have to pay for transit services at all. I actually agree with that particular point of view, even though I thought it was more of an empty threat by the city than a legal reality. Yet those same members have no problem supporting a resolution that continues to bill city residents for transit services in that matter. Why is it fair that the city of Erie and to a few other municipalities to a lesser degree have to contribute, but others shouldn't? Why isn't what's good for the goose, good for the gander in this instance? I think that's patently unfair. In the end, if we can't find an amicable agreement, let's at least have an amicable parting of the ways. The mayor and other City Council members have stated that they are not interested in regionalizing the board any more than the current charter allows, and they could fund the local match for the EMTA. We should take them at their word and not assume the worst. However, in the future, if the city finds it cannot continue financing EMTA, I have a hard time believing the county won't be there to offer a helping hand. We've done this in many instances currently. The best example I think I can give you is dispatching services. But at least then, a more reasonable, equitable, and regional agreement can be reached. As I've stated before, and I'll state again, you can sign a charter today, and nothing precludes the interested parties from starting new negotiations the very next day to possibly unravel and completely redo what was signed the previous day. In doing so, we should not saddle the city of Erie residents and, again, some other municipalities to a lesser degree with double taxation. No elected official should stand for that. At its face, this resolution should be defeated on that, if nothing else. And we shouldn't saddle all of Erie County with a transit board that by all of council and even the county executive has said is dysfunctional. If others want to operate in such a manner, that's their prerogative. I, for one, will not enable such leadership. I voted for something that achieves those realities. As public officials, we are constantly hounded to support transformational initiatives because we are told in doing so, we might make our community more viable into the future. And we are roundly criticized when we don't support those initiatives by various courts of opinion. But if this resolution passes today, in my opinion, it will not bring about any of the substantive, progressive, or transformational change our community demands and deserves. So I call upon my colleagues to defeat this resolution because that is the right thing to do and because it does not improve the current situation. It only perpetuates the status quo with marginal changes at best. Furthermore, if this resolution is defeated today, and I have no idea, quite frankly, how the vote will go... how the vote will go, I call upon one, if not all, three members of county council who voted to sustain the county executive's veto to introduce a motion to reconsider so that further court action and the time, attention, and expense that is associated with such action can be avoided. Our resources are too precious to do otherwise. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Faust. Any other council members to be heard?
Yes, Chairman.
Councilwoman.
Briefly, I very much respect all of the work, and when, I want to make sure that people know that for the past 12-plus months, members of county council were diligently working to come to some kind of an understanding and compromise with regard to EMTA, but they were, they hit a brick wall because they were negotiating with themselves. So to think that their hard work has not been recognized and is not appreciated, I want to make that perfectly clear, that everything that was done before it made the meeting that we had and to come up with some of these ideas for the resolution go a lot more smoothly. I'm overrode, or voted not to override the veto because I was concerned about Vanessa and those students like her. I was concerned about those individuals who needed transportation to get employment, had to turn down jobs because they didn't have the transportation, and concerned about people that needed behavioral health or access to their doctor. These are people that I knew personally as well. This is not a perfect resolution. It is a compromise, and we have a choice and a decision to make, and it is either going to be compromise, conflict, or court. I'm going to choose compromise. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fatiga. Any other council members to be heard?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Councilman Di Matteo.
I as well worked with Mrs. Fatiga and Mrs. Lowell on this. As Mrs. Fatiga just said, is it perfect? No. Yes, it is a compromise. And I guess I mean no disrespect, you know, to Dr. Faust, but just, you know, a couple of the things that he has said, and other members of council have stated this though, too, you know, originally, yes, this was to relieve the city of a $260,000 burden. I think, you know, Mr. Brennan is here and would agree, that the city isn't in a rosy financial situation, okay? But at the end of the day, if we pull out of this, all right, instead of costing the city $260,000, we will reward them with $900,000 of debt every year. So if we were trying to help them out on the 260, because it didn't go our way, we will enable them with $900,000. You know, I guess we hear from Pendot that on next Wednesday, or the charter will come to an expiration next Wednesday, on the 14th, and on the 15th, Pendot will take over. And Pendot has given us some assurances, that they said, hopefully, that there will not be any interruption in service, but you never know. You know, quite frankly, we don't know what that brings next Thursday. We don't know what Pendot is going to do, as Mr. Lee stated, or what the future would hold for Pendot. Do they accept what the city proposes, the $900,000 that they say they may have, but the mayor is unwilling to tell us where that money is going to come from? Do we really think Pendot is going to do a better job with the county than what we've done? And you've stated very correctly that, you know, county council over the years has been very diligent with their finances, and we're in a very good position. But at the end of the day, do we want to turn over an asset of Erie County, EMTA, that we've contributed to so much money over the past number of years, that we're willing to give that away to Pendot? I'm not willing to do that. You know, you spoke about that possibility, possibly seven members of this new board would reside in the city at one time. That is quite possible. But currently, I think of their nine-member board right now, four or five of those members reside outside of the city. It's not about where they live, it's about who those appointments were given to. You know, the mayor or city council so chose to appoint those people, some live in Mill Creek, some live in Harbor Creek, some live in Lawrence Park. So it's really not about where they reside, it's about who makes these appointments. Again, we sat down, we tried to come up with something that was possibly logical, something that was workable. Much was accomplished in those two hours, or much more was accomplished in those two hours that had been accomplished in the past, in the previous 16 months, okay? It's broad as till today. No, again, it isn't perfect. Can we work through this? Are there other little nuances or little things that need to be changed with this before it is finally ratified? Probably so, but this is what we have today, you know? It is. It's about cooperation, it's about moving forward. You know, I could probably go on and on, but we'll leave it at that. People know where I stand. Let's hope that we can pass this resolution tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Di Matteo. Any other council persons to be heard?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I had reached out to our legal counsel for advice on this resolution, and what we got back was a rather lengthy response about some of the aspects of this resolution that are in direct conflict with the state's Municipal Authority Act, particularly the point, the points where the three and four, where the appointments are made without the advice and consent of the county executive, that's point three, and point four, where the city's appointments would be made without the advice or consent by the mayor. That being, those two points being a fundamental flaw in this. The second being that the requirement that the board appointments have a five-year term, rather than, and that, again, would change drastically in the essential key, you know, critical part of this resolution that called for a two-year swing. The next one seemed to be like a minor thing that could probably be worked out, but the other flaw that's fundamental in this resolution is that the way that the staggering of the appointments are made is that that, too, is in direct conflict with the state municipal authority act. So with that, I guess I just have a question as to whether we're going to vote on a resolution that is fundamentally unimplementable and is in direct contradiction with the state municipal authority act.
Thank you, Councilman Brennan.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I guess, just to answer that, and possibly our legal counsel could give us more, but, you know, I think that some of those things could be easily worked through. Under the Municipal Authorities Act, though, I think some of those things, there have been some changes made with that concerning certain authorities at the state level, and I guess I would say with the airport authority, the civic center authority, and as well as ECRAs, where those appointees are made by council without the advice and consent of the county executive. Is that the case?
We have advice and consent for all.
The county executive doesn't make those appointments.
Advice and consent.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Tom, the convention center authority is only appointed by this council.
Mm-hmm.
It's not by advice and consent of the county executive.
As well as the ECRAs board, too. The ECRAs board--
And the ECRAs board is the same. Yeah.
And the airport authority.
That's entirely different than what's in that structure was changed in the state law. And the counties are localized, nothing to do with that. So, I can't recall if it was years ago when that happened, but the Convention Center Authority Act was redone just several years ago to make those changes. And it's more complicated than that, because it calls for governor appointments as well as mayor appointments.
But I guess, okay, but the airport authority and ECRAs, those are two other authorities. And this says here, under the act, as well as the Home Rule Charter, all appointments to authorities must be made by the county executive with the advice and consent of council. I make an appointment to the airport authority board, I make an appointment to the ECRAs board. Those are both authorities. I make that, the county executive does not make that.
I could be wrong, but I think that those, just like the Convention Center Authority, are governed under a different authority act that's not necessarily comprised within the PA municipal authority act. With the gaming revenue, that was a separate act, so was the Convention Center, et cetera, and the airport.
The municipal authorities law is a completely different act. The ECRAs was created under the financing of the law and the race racing law, and those are, those appointments are different. However, under that law, you're really not making an appointment. You're just bringing that recommendation to the county executive, and she's accepting it. But it's her appointment with the advice and consent. Now, customarily, over the years, as long as I've been here, county council has often given the county executive their appointment, and the county executive has agreed to it. But procedurally, the way the Home Rule Charter reads and every single authority law that I have read, and there's probably about at least a dozen authorities in their county law, the county executive actually has the power of appointment, and county council has the authority to approve or disapprove, or advise her in consent. So, you know, that's how that works. And more specifically, the municipal authorities law provides the county executive has all the power of appointment. That is what the law says, that's not what this resolution says.
But in the end, it's not a huge hurdle to overcome.
No, the bigger one is the staggering one. I mean, the resolution calls for a new board every other year. You're not going to be able to conduct business very well if you have a board coming in and out every other year. I mean, how could a board function and have any stability or cohesiveness from one year to the next if it knows that it's only, if the members are going to be, and their policy and decision making is going to be abruptly changed with an incoming board? And not only that, if you have a brand-new board every other year, how is it that that board could function independently of the political municipalities that have the appointments?
When you say every other year, you're referring to the one position, correct?
No. No, this calls for changes every two years. Four members, five members come in every two years.
No, president. No, the changes are every two years.
No, it's the initial, is the way it was set up with county council in the beginning. Half of the appointments, or four of the appointments, were made for two years, so that every, after that initial, okay, after that initial, they would rotate on a four-year basis. Now, and quite frankly, and if it was a mistake when we wrote the resolution, I understand that, and those four years could be changed to five years, and we could easily do that. But again, I really don't perceive these as huge hurdles to overcome. The gist of it being, I guess for the other council members as well, is that, you know, we're trying to split the board, four and four with a rotating position. I'm sure that we can make that work in the rotation, you know, somehow with the Municipal Authorities Act to make those years work out. You know, it's based on trying to split it in half, it was based on funding. It seems to me that, quite frankly, you know, a lot of people are looking for excuses to vote no to this, all right? No one has really come forward to give us an excuse to vote yes, because it's the right thing to do, at least in my mind, it's the right thing to do. You know, if everybody wants an excuse to vote no, that's fine, and you can just say no, you don't have to give an excuse, we can just say, no, I'm not in favor of it. So.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I don't look for an excuse at all. As much as, as a city resident and city taxpayer, as much as I hate dual taxation, and, but I recognize that the climate of the political class in Erie is one that we can't do anything that's transformational, and I see this, but I don't understand the point of voting for something that is fundamentally flawed, saying, pass now, fix it later. I just, I mean, I just don't get the point of doing that, and I don't, I don't know why we would pass something that is so critically flawed and against state law on that.
Count, Dr. Faust?
I'll just reiterate, I'm not for this, so I intend to leave it answered. I think I gave my reasons, I recall them reasons, not excuses to do. But you did mention something that I wanted to ask you, because we haven't really had a chance as a group to discuss it together. You use a percentage basis for the contribution. What was the line of thinking, and why didn't that carry over to the board?
I think if I remember correctly from the discussion that we had that evening, it was with 40% of the residents residing in the city, 40% of that money would come from the city, 60% would come from the county.
I know, but why doesn't that same point like carry over to the board? That's what you contribute, that's what your board representation.
Well, in essence, I guess in that every-two-year scenario, or whatever the years would be, it would have carried over to that. Again, it was to make a compromise, and again, as I said, not everybody was going to get what everybody wanted. That's how those things were come up with.
Are you guys ready for the question?
I just, I know back before we met that there was discussion of amending this, and I don't even think that, I mean, I don't think the percentages are even accurate, 40 in the city, I think it's closer to like 35, but not to belabor that, there was some discussion in the back about amending this so that it is in compliance with the state municipal act. So I'm just wondering, and I know they can make that motion, but I don't know if anybody's going to make the motion to amend it, to do that. But otherwise, I'm fine with it. Again, I'm willing to compromise, and, but I can't vote against, I can't vote for something that's fundamentally opposed to state law.
Chairman, can I make one more comment? I think I can speak for everybody. There isn't anybody on this panel, and the way we've conducted our business, that isn't willing to compromise on a reasonable compromise. Now, obviously, there's a different definition amongst this panel as to what is a reasonable compromise, but I am more than willing to listen to offers that I think are in the best interest of this community, and really make progressive change, an important change, not just marginal, around-the-fringes change, that I know disrespect to my colleagues who support this, I think at best, that's what this does. But there isn't anybody on this council that is going to stand in the way of what we believe is effective and important change. We have a strong disagreement, I think, among some of us, as to what that is. But I don't think we should presume that just because somebody's going to vote against this resolution, they are closed-minded or obstinate or against compromise when it would come about. Thank you. I call for the questions, Mr. Chairman.
Question, Mr. Smith, would you roll call, please?
On Resolution 41, Mr. Brenneman?
No.
Mr. Di Matteo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
No.
Mr. Leone?
No.
Mrs. Lowell?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
No.
It fails three-four.
Move the chair.